All right. All right, the meeting of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills Planning Board for Monday, September 9th, 2024 at 7:30 PM. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 at sect of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. If you would call the roll, please.
Mayor Bavaria.
Here.
Mr. De Vich.
Here.
Councilman McGrath.
Here.
Mr. Mealy.
Here.
Mr. Napolitano.
Here.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Stanziel.
Here.
Chairman Dinsmore.
Here.
We also have our board planner, Ms. Winter, our board engineer, Mr. Hanjiano, and our board attorney, Ms. Diamond.
All right, if we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic whose stance remains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
This meeting is open to the general public. Is there anyone here that wishes to come before this tribunal? That has something that is not on our agenda tonight. Hearing and seeing none. We have a bunch of resolutions to go through. They're listed in your packet here. See, we got it. Is it such that we can do the group?
They're all the same.
They're what?
All the same members.
Ah, good. All right, so I have somebody making a motion approving all of the members, all of the items on the res, on the agenda given to us by Nora, or the note given to us by Nora. For application number 24:512, SK 3 Centuries Associates LLC, 3 Century Drive, Block 202, Lot 1.7, Zone ROL, soil moving permit, and then 24523, and then 24509. Do I have the... Now, if we want to do them separately, that's fine, too.
Motion to approve, application number 24:512, SK 3 Century Associates, 3 Century Drive, Block 202, Lot 1.7, Zone ROL, soil moving permit. Application 24:523, Nevell Rana, 295 Atlantic Drive, Block 205, Lot 4, Zone R3, major soil moving permit. Application number 24:509, Paul Miller, 220, 250, Route 46, Block 693, Lot 12.01, minor site plan to install a security gate.
Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Who's second, Ed?
Second, Smith.
Oh, yes. Good idea.
McGrath?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Stanziel?
Yes.
Dinsmore?
Yes.
E. Piero?
Yes, and I am staying on 24:509. No, no. Which one did I now vote on?
You voted on all of them.
Okay.
You're good on all.
Yes.
They're all voted the same night.
All right. So we've got our resolutions done. Tonight, we have two items on our agenda, but they will be the same company, same applicant. So calling application number 24:5516 and 515. We'll do them separately, I guess. Start with 516, counselor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mayor, members of the board, John Inglisino of Inglisino Taylor. On behalf of the applicants, I guess we're going to try to do them the way we did them last time because they're related, so we're going to do them together for efficiency purposes. Tonight, we're seeking amended preliminary and final site plan approval for two projects, Notice 2 Campus and 3 Campus. I'm sure the board recalls these two projects, both from when they were originally approved back in 2021, and when they were amended last year. As we did last year, we're providing them together for just better efficiency and understanding purposes. Regarding 2 Campus, the applicant is Avalon Precipity 2 Campus Urban Renewal LLC, which is a 100% owned subsidiary of Avalon Bay Community, Inc. The subject property is Lot 3.12, Block 202, Lot 3.7, Block 202, and Lot 3.8 and Block 202, all of which we're referring to here as 2 Campus. The applicant is also the designated redeveloper of the subject property, and as the board recalls, this property was approved for 172-unit multifamily inclusionary housing development back in February of 2021, and on September 11th of 2023, this board granted an amendment to that approval, which included, among other things, exchanging supportive housing units for affordable units. This evening, we're seeking a modification to those approvals, which we trust the board will view as minor in the pejorative sense, and these modifications will be explained by our engineer in a moment. But essentially, with respect to 2 Campus, it's for the relocation of four supportive housing units from 2 Campus to 3 Campus, relocation of four affordable housing units from 3 Campus to 2 Campus, removal of two patio doors on two units located on the ground floor, removal of screens and gates to the electrical meter alcoves as required by the utility company, and we're going to slightly modify the parking spaces. Again, you'll hear testimony in a moment and more details regarding that. Regarding 3 Campus, again, the applicant is Avalon Bay, or Avalon Precipity 3 Campus Urban Renewal LLC, 100% owned subsidiary of Avalon Bay Communities, Inc., and that subject property is, I gotta mix them up, but anyway, it's 3 Campus. And that applicant is also the designated redeveloper of the subject property. As a board recalls, that property was approved for 238 multifamily inclusionary housing development back on April 5th of 2021, and then on September 11th, the board granted an amendment to that approval, which included, among other things, exchanging supportive housing units for affordable units. This evening, we're seeking a modification to those approvals, which, again, we trust the board will view as minor in the pejorative sense, and those relate, again, to the exchange of affordable supportive housing units and affordable housing units, relocation of a water utility room to below the first story along the east side of the building, removal of screens and gates to the electrical meter enclaves as required by the utility company, and three light poles previously located on 7 Campus were relocated to 3 Campus. There's some planting provided in the new additional parking islands that accommodate the shifted light poles, and we're modifying the, again, modifying the total number of parking spaces. Here, I think we're losing two parking spaces. There are only 404 parking spaces required. I think the approval was for 416, and we're dropping two to go to 414, so still very compliant. We have three witnesses tonight, Craig Herman of PSS, the project civil engineer, Luis Del Mar Rosado, the project architect, and Tom Carmen of Moro Bauer &amp; Carmen, who's the landscape architect, all of which you've heard from previously. We do have a few waivers that we are requesting due to the nature of this being a modification to previously approved site plan. We're asking for a waiver with regard to a traffic study, EIS, the highlands exemption, storm drainage, and separate sheets from preliminary and final subplan approval. I think that the planner's office has indicated no objection to any of those waivers, given the nature of the amendment, but Ms. Winters will certainly address that.
The waivers are, as Mr. Inglisino said, the highlands exemption, drainage, truck study, environmental assessment study, and separate sheets for the combined preliminary and final approvals. We have no objection, given that much of this information was previously supplied, and assuming testimony shows that no changes would affect those things.
Have a motion approving the waivers.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Each, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this point in time, I'd like to call up Mr. Craig Herman of PSS, who is our project civil engineer. I know that Mr. Herman has been previously qualified in connection with this application, and a year ago was qualified before the board as an expert in civil engineering. Let's simply ask Mr. Herman, well, first of all, you're going to have to give your name and address.
If you please raise your right hand, you swear affirm the testimony that you're about to give of the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Please state your names, spell your last name, and provide your address for the record.
My name is Craig Herman. Last name is spelled H-E-R-M-A-N-N. I work for P-S-N-S at 3 Mountain View Road, Warren, New Jersey, 07059.
And Mr. Herman, since the last time you testified before this board, correct, in connection with this application?
Correct.
Has there been any change to your license since you last testified and were accepted as an expert witness before this board?
No.
I'd ask the board respectfully to, again, accept Mr. Herman as an expert in the area of civil engineering.
Any questions on Mr. Herman's qualifications?
I don't, but I have a question. Are we listening to these concurrently, 2 and 4 and 1 and 3? Are we doing 2 and 4 first? We're doing 1 and 3 first? What are we listening to right now?
We're kind of doing 2. Well, we're doing the engineering testimony first, so the engineering testimony will be of both of them, yeah. Do it the same way we did it last time, which is that we'll take each professional to go through both first. So the engineer will do 2, and then 3, and likewise.
I'm familiar with 2 and 4, also 1 and 3. I'm not with number 7. What is 7 Campus Drive? That's not, that's not part of the same building.
So, no. 7 Campus Drive is actually, because there's an easement on it, it had to be part of the application, but 7 Campus is actually going to be the warehouse, which is next door to 3 Campus.
Mm-hmm.
There is no 5 Campus.
Right.
I don't know why, but there's an easement that goes, encroaches onto the 7 Campus property, so that's why it's kind of lumped in with this, but 7 Campus is not part of the application functionally.
That's not changing at all, 7 Campus?
No.
Okay.
In fact, 7 Campus is going to be a warehouse, and that application is going to be coming before the board in the coming months, and you may recall, there's an agreement between Avalon Bay and the owner of the warehouse with regard to the placement of sound walls. All that was reflected in your redevelopment plan, and so 7 Campus is going to be coming in separately, but for technical reasons, it has to be done separately.
Okay. Thank you for talking.
So, Mr. Herman, why don't you explain, if you can, first for what we're referring to as 2 Campus, and then what we're referring to as 3 Campus, and do a little bit better job than I did in terms of the lot and block numbers there.
So, this is an aerial exhibit that we had prepared for the last application, and it gives, it's here to orientate the board to where the projects are located, so...
So, was this was submitted in the, this application packet?
It was not submitted as part of this application.
Okay, we'll just mark it as A1.
Yeah.
And could you just describe it?
Describe it and give a date.
September 11th, 2023 is the date. It is an aerial photo, property boundary overlay.
Okay.
So, just to orientate the board, this is 202 Littleton Avenue, right here, Campus Drive, that splits the two projects, is located right here. To the south is Route 10. We have 1 Campus Drive, which is the existing office building, and in, right next to it, is the 3 Campus Drive site, and then 7 Campus is over in this area here, and the only, what's I'll talk to about, I'm going to talk about 3 Campus is the shift of the lights from 7 Campus down to 3 Campus. On the other side of the road, on 10 Campus Drive, we have 2 Campus right here, and 4 Campus is right next door. So, 2 Campus Drive is Block 202, Lots 3.1, 3.2, and 3.20. And the main change to 2 Campus Drive that's part of this application is the change in the parking based off of the reallocation of the units that our architect will provide additional testimony to. And in the approved application, we required 283 parking stalls, and then based off of the reallocation of the units, we're now required that 289, and the EV parking spaces went from 48, went from 48 required to 49 required. So, for the 2 Campus Drive, we have 250 onsite parking stalls, and then for the approved application, we had 33 shared parking stalls with 4 Campus. And the application has changed because of the additional required parking stalls. For this, this is sheets, C5 of the plans that was submitted to the board. We have the 250 onsite parking stalls, plus now we have 39 shared parking stalls on 4 Campus, so we meet the 289 required parking stalls. And then the proposed EV, we're required that 48, we're proposing 49 as part of this application.
So, we confirm with regard to parking?
So, one of the, I wanted to touch on the engineer's letter. The engineer's letter identified an issue with the location of the generator that was located up here in the 20-foot wide required buffer. At the time, after this, after this application was submitted to the board, we also submitted to the zoning department for an administrative change for a couple of items. One was related to transformer relocation. The second item was related to moving the centers to a pump station from this corner inside the building to outside the building located at this grass area, this grass island in the corner of the parking lot. With that came a relocation of the generator to that same location. So, on the plans that the board received, we have the generator that was located within that buffer. The, when we're going through the administrative review process with the zoning department, they identified the fact that that generator was located within the buffer, so we relocated it down to a, and kind of was able to sneak it into that same area of the landscape island as the pump station. So, we were able to move it out of the buffer, and we've since received a revised zoning permit for the pump station, the generator, and the relocated transformer. So, that was one item that was brought up by the engineer.
Thank you.
The second item was related to what are you going to see at grade for the pump station, and essentially, it's just going to be a slab on grade with an access hatch, and then you'll have the control panel that will be above grade.
And that's a moot point now, since it's been relocated?
It's been relocated, and we have the approval from the zoning official. Yes. And then another item that was brought up was, is we have a label that shows the 39 shared parking spaces on 4 Campus, and we have a label that also points to the 250 onsite, so we'll fix that label as part of the resolution compliance package.
Now, that agreement, I just had a question on that, if I may. That agreement between Lot 3.2 and 3.20, that was 33 spaces, now it's 39 spaces?
That's my understanding, yes.
And you have the, I'm just confused on the agreement between the two projects.
That I have to defer to.
I think that's correct. I think that agreement is already in the record, by the way.
Yeah. So, are you changing the agreement at all, or is it already, this is old history?
I think that's old history.
The zoning permit has 33, so we probably just didn't know about 39.
Well, the change now is to 39 based off of the reallocation of the units.
Okay.
Because it increased the partner requirement, so that's one of the reasons we're in front of the board tonight is for that change.
The change, okay.
Okay.
Okay, moving right on to 3 Campus. Again, the reason for the changes, for the change in the parking number required based off of the reallocated units, and also with the fact that the initial application that was approved had some lights along 7 Campus, that was intended to light the improvements on 3 Campus. As part of this application, we are requesting to shift those lights from 7 Campus down and put them on 3 Campus lot, and as a result of that, we had to add two landscape islands in that parking area, so we lost the two parking stalls. So, between the change because of the additional islands and the reallocated units in the approved application, it was required to have 410 parking stalls, we're now required to have 404 parking stalls, with 60 EV required, and now we're required to have 69 as part of this application. So, the proposed parking, the approved application is 416, which is over above what was required before, and we're now reducing that by the two that we lost because of the islands down to 414, to reduce the two parking spaces. And then we provide the required 69 parking spaces for the amended site, the reallocated Again, I wanted to touch upon a couple of things on the engineer's letter. Number one, there was some inconsistency with the plan dates, so we'll address that with the board engineer when we do resolution compliance. There's a stair relocation due to the new water room, and it slightly increases the impervious cover on the site, but it's not significant enough to change our stone water management design, and that was indicated by the engineer in his letter. And then again, I already mentioned it, but we had the light, light poles on 7 Campus that have been now moved down to 3 Campus, resulting in the two needed additional curvings.
So, you've agreed to comply with both of the board engineer's reports for the amended plan?
Yes.
So, now they're, now Lot 3.8, which had the light poles, will now have nothing on it?
Correct.
I'm assuming you've said what you want to say for now.
So, what I want to say.
Okay.
Just ask a quick question. I don't believe I was here for the original ones that you guys presented. Is there a set aside for sidewalks here, or an escrow for sidewalks here, similar to what we did, counselor, for some of the other projects? Is that included in this?
I believe it is. I wouldn't defer to the chairman.
I don't remember for sure.
I believe there is.
I want to try to make sure that we have the sidewalks issues, now that, now that we've gone through this a number of cases, and we have this whole campus drive area is now becoming a mixture of...
There isn't any sidewalks.
Yeah, the sidewalk, the Fardel conversation was like, three, four weeks, well, maybe two, three months ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, as I recall...
It wasn't during this.
We didn't know which side of the street the sidewalks would be, and I believe you promised to put money up for wherever, whichever side's going to be built on, you'll pay...
I think so. I would defer to that. I don't remember. We're kind of at the tail end of this, and we're just making a few minor tweaks at this point.
So, you wouldn't object if we reiterate that there'll be money set aside in escrow for a sidewalk project in the future?
I, you know, I don't know what we agreed to the last time, and, huh? All right, my client's telling me it was...
I think this, this application was before we had, that got into the depth with the sidewalks on Sylvan and Campus. This was heard and approved prior to that, but the question, I, yeah, I guess we're asking, to be consistent with the other improvements, we'd like, the town would like to have sidewalks on escrow posted, or for future sidewalks along the frontage of these two properties. You know, this is the more recent discussion that we had, albeit this one was prior to that discussion, but I'm sure the township would be interested in having the sidewalks, the escrow posted for the sidewalks in front of these.
Yeah, I don't know how much, and I'd have to discuss it with my client. I just don't know. It's not an issue that came up on this, I guess.
Well, it's, the board has become aware of the fact that this area is going from a purely office area to being a, a community, a residential area, and in residential areas, we have to have sidewalks. We just have to do it for safety, because people are going to be walking along here.
I feel like there was a discussion about this at the last one, but I don't remember what it was.
Yeah, but that may be one of the other applications.
Yeah, I don't remember.
Definitely was on the different ones. I just, again, that's before my time, I think you guys started this one, so...
Yeah.
I agree with the engineer. I think we should make it consistent and require it on this one, too.
Yeah, I just, I'd have to have a sidebar with my client, that's all.
Yeah, I just looked up the resolution for, this one's for 3 Campus, and there was testimony that there were no sidewalks proposed on Campus Drive, but there were internal sidewalks to be maintained within the property, like, I think around the building...
Was that the first resolution or the second one?
That was for 3. Let me...
No, I mean, was that 2021 or 2023?
That was for the First Amendment. I don't...
So, that would have been 2023, right?
Yeah, I don't know if I have the original one.
I have the zoning permits with me, and I did not document anything about sidewalks in either permit or on the site plan.
If someone lives at Campus 2, and they want to attend Campus 3's pool, is that legal? Are they allowed to do that? Can they safely get from 2 to 3? By crossing the crosswalk? Is there anything there to get them across? I mean...
Well, again, we're not, we're not, that's all been established...
I know, you guys came back with other stuff, so, you know, you change your plans, we want to help, and change them again.
Yeah, I understand.
And also, if they can't use that pool, they want to join Lifetime Fitness on Sylvan. Can they walk safely around to Sylvan Way and get to Lifetime Fitness?
I'm sorry.
Along 202, around...
Sorry, we'll have, if you're going to provide testimony, we'll have to swear you in.
Yeah, I mean, I, obviously, the applicant only controls its property. He doesn't control anybody else's property, so I don't, I don't think we can answer that question.
But at least 2 and 3, they're the same owner, right?
Right, that's correct.
Well, this number 3, looks like it has better stuff on it than number 2 does, and if they're going to be able to use them both, then I suggest get them safely there. Makes sense?
Understood.
But I'm not a teeter.
Let's, let's get through the rest of the applica, here you on the sidewalks, I have to confer with my client. We just want to get the rest of the testimony, because it's very brief, and then I'll confer with my client.
We would love, love, because of the way this neighborhood is changing, and we really didn't focus on that in the earlier meetings, and we have been very focused on it.
I know you have been, Mr. Chairman. I understand.
...in recent meetings, because we really do believe it is a safety and community issue.
Yep. Understood. I just don't have authority to spend their money without their say-so.
Also understood. Also understood. It's reasonable for you to consult with your client, but I think the sense of this board is we're pretty darn set on trying to find ways that we can get sidewalks. but I think the sense of this board is we're, we're pretty darn set on trying to find ways that we can get sidewalks in here.
I understand that.
Okay. Other questions by members of the board on this testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none. Counselor?
Want to open up the public?
Oh, yeah, we can do that. Are there any members of the public who have any questions on this testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none. Now we can move on.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to call Ms. Luz Rosado.
Could you please raise your right hand? Do you swear affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Please state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address for the record.
My name is Luz Rosado, and my last name is spelled R-O-S-A-D-O. I work for Lesar Design as an architect, and the address is eighty-five twenty-one Lisbon High, Suite seven hundred, Vienna, Virginia, two-two-one-eight-two.
And Ms. Rosado, you've been the architect of record on this project, right? And you last gave testimony before the board about a year ago, correct?
Correct.
And your license is still valid? Have there been any changes in your professional credentials since you last testified before the board?
There has been no changes.
I'd like to ask for the board to accept Ms. Rosado as an expert in the area of architecture.
Any questions on Ms. Rosado's qualifications from the board? Hearing and seeing none. Counselor?
Thank you, Ms. Rosado, and if you could please provide the architectural aspects of the application to the board, both for what we're referring to as two campus, and then with what we're referring to as three campus.
The first thing that... The first item I want to address is the reallocation of units. We had, actually, there are five units, not four. Reallocation of supporting housing units from two campus were moved to three campus, and five affordable housing units were moved from three campus to two campus. The unit total remained the same, and the unit bedroom distribution remained the same. The second thing that we did, I'll just describe, two campus in the floor plan. We removed two patio doors on two units located on the ground floor, and we removed the screens and gates to the electrical meter alcoves as requested by the utility companies. And I'll just show you in the floor plan where those are located. These are the utility rooms here.
You need the microphone.
The utility rooms here, they used to have a screen and a gate, a screen and a gate here that was removed. The two patio doors were located in this unit and this unit, and that was, the door was removed. And the location of the affordable units right now are on this location, colored in red, and on this location in every floor here.
Could I, could I just have one more piece of clarification? Sorry to interrupt. So if I remember correctly, this gentleman that was here, he said he went to the state, and he spoke about getting units for special needs members of the community, and those would be the affordable housing. But then they said that a three-bedroom unit would count as three units instead of just one unit. Is that, is that the ones we're talking about here?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
The second, the third thing I want to address for two campus is, it was brought up that there was an incorrect title on the square footage of signage. We will be correcting that to represent the sixty-eight point twenty-five square footage on the resolution compliant package. Then I'll move to three campus. I'll sit here for this. On three campus, we, the same revisions we did to the meter alka rooms where we removed the gates, and, and the screens are located in this, in this occasion here, and here. Then the units that were swapped are located here and here. Then the additional thing we did on three campus was the addition of a water room, utility room, to be in this area under the building that is accessed via half a level of steps in here into this room below. And the same comment about the square footage title on the signage exhibit, we will be correcting that for the compliance assessment package. And the rest of the architecture remain the same, and there has not been other changes.
That concludes your testimony?
That concludes my testimony.
Okay, no further questions from you, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions by members of the board on this testimony? Hearing and seeing none. Mr. Kenji Ano, do you have any?
No, no comments.
Just curious why the patio doors were removed?
It was a design, design direction from, from the client, and we just coordinated. The patios were not there, and we were showing a door, so we just went ahead and corrected that.
Okay, so there were no patios existing prior?
During, during the development, I would defer to the landscape architect to, to keep testimonies about the exterior.
All right, no other questions? Are members of the public who have questions on this testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to call Mr. Tom Carman.
Good evening.
Hello, could you please raise your hand? Do you swear affirm the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address for the record.
Sure, my name is Thomas S. Carman, C-A-R-M-A-N. The address is two hundred Union Ave, Real, New Jersey.
And Mr. Carman, you also have been the landscape architect involved with this application from its inception, correct?
That's correct.
And you gave testimony at the, about a year ago, the last time this was before the board, correct?
I did.
And have there been any changes to your credentials, professional credentials, or licenses, or anything like that since then? Okay, Mr. Chairman, we ask that you accept Mr. Carman as an expert in the area of landscape architecture.
Any questions on the qualifications of Mr. Carman by members of the board? Hearing and seeing none. Counselor?
Thank you. Mr. Carman, please provide the landscape architectural aspects of the application.
Sure. So the, this is an exhibit that I guess we should mark. It's entitled Rendered Landscape Plan for Two Campus with today's date, nine nine.
Must be A two?
So just for orientation on this graphic, on the right-hand side is campus drive itself. There are, really, the revisions that I'm going to speak about for landscape and lighting on both two campus and three campus are very, very minor. They're all reactionary to the adjustments that you heard from both the civil engineer and the architect. On this two-campus exhibit itself, I've highlighted three areas where there is a red bubble, so to speak, around the area of some minor change. The first one in the lower right, that's just at the entry drive itself where the sign that was previously approved, we've made some very minor adjustments to the planting in that location. At the lobby entrance, which is the middle bubble, that, again, some minor tweaks you heard related to the, to the utility closet over there, and some adjustments that we had to accommodate, the architectural adjustment there, and we modified some of the planting in that location. And then the last one in the upper left-hand corner, that's where you heard the testimony about the pump station and the generator.
Just, Ms. Smith is leaving at the moment, just to let you know, put it on the record. All right.
At that pump station and generator location, both the planning, as well as the engineering memo that we received, indicated that we did not reflect that on the landscape plan. So this exhibit does reflect that, and we've provided some evergreen screening around it. So we will update, as part of resolution compliance, we will depict that evergreen screening on those plants. For two campus, the, the ultimate net changes are an additional thirteen evergreen trees to screen that, approximately an additional thirty shrubs, and fifteen or so ornamental grasses and ground cover planting were added to two campus. Transitioning to three campus, this graphic is entitled Rendered Landscape Plan, again with today's date of nine nine, twenty twenty-four, and I've identified, marked it as A three. This, again, very minor change on plan, the right-hand side, you'll see a, a bubble in red, and that shows where the lights that were previously on seven campus, we were proposing them on the seven campus property, have now shifted into the islands that were just described by the civil engineer. Those islands have been planted with some ground cover. And then we also had three trees that were proposed on seven campus property as well that we have since removed. So the net change is on this one. We eliminated those three trees, and then we have added forty shrubs for that ground cover planting at the islands. That concludes my testimony. Those are the very minor changes.
Members of the board have questions on this testimony at this time? Professionals have any?
Yeah, so the patios for those two units didn't exist prior, that's why we are removing doors.
That's correct. Those two units did not have patios.
Any other? Nothing else? Are there members of the public who have any questions on this testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none. Counselor?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, at this point, I think I'd like to ask for just a five-minute break so I can confer with my client. I don't have any further witnesses, but I'd just like to ask for five minutes so that I could confer with my client regarding the sidewalks.
All right, going to take a five-minute break.
Mr. Chairman, oh, sorry.
Nora, we back on the records?
Yes, we are.
All right. We're reconvening at eight fifteen. Nora, could you call the roll, please?
Barbario.
Here.
Deech.
Here.
Piero.
Here.
McGrath.
Here.
Mealy.
Here.
Napolitano.
Here.
Stanziel.
Here.
Here.
All right. Now, Counselor.
Chairman, please report that the applicant will agree that if the township does the sidewalk master plan and implements sidewalks, that the applicant will pay its pro-rata share towards sidewalks on its property. You know, because they can't agree to pay for sidewalks on other people's property. And if the township, you know, does one side of the street, however the township wants to apportion that, we'll pay our pro-rata share to the township for the sidewalks.
That sounds very fair.
And that'll be the condition of approval. We're fine with that.
Thank you. All right, your case, sir?
I just want to thank the board for listening. Appreciate the input from your professionals. These are minor modifications. We think makes the application better. We're not seeking any variance relief tonight from the board. This is all as of right, and respectfully ask the board for its approval.
All right, are there any members of the public who wish to come up and speak in opposition to this application, or these applications? Are there any members of the public who wish to come up and speak in favor of these applications? Hearing and seeing none. Counselor, I assume you've summed already?
I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, the evidentiary portion of this case is closed. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman. Can we do both together, or...?
I think in the prior application, we did it separately, so we'll just do it separately.
All right, then motion to approve application number twenty-four, colon, five-one-six, Avalon Bay Communities, two-campus drive, block two oh two, lot three point two, four-campus drive, block two oh two, lot three point two, sixteen thirty-three Little Drive, block two oh two, lot three point one, amended preliminary and final major site plan to relocate units, remove patio doors, remove screens and gates, and parking.
There...
Second.
You have the...
Conditions, yeah.
Any conditions, sir?
Just, it was... complying with the board engineer reports and, reports and recommendations, and revise the architectural plans to correct the signage square footage, and update, also correct the landscape plans to reflect the evergreen screening around the pump station.
But also agreeing to...
The sidewalk.
And then, yep.
To work within any, any sidewalk master plan that's, that's put in place for this...
Yep, to escrow funds...
That they would participate in that.
For sidewalks on its property, and would pay the pro-rata share for, for sidewalks along campus drive.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Barbario.
Yes.
Deech.
Yes.
De Piero.
Yes.
McGrath.
Yes.
Mealy.
Yes.
Napolitano.
Yes.
Stanziel.
Yes.
Stinsmore.
Yes.
All right, now, the next one, who would, the second application?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Mealy?
A motion to approve application number twenty-four, colon, five-one-five. Avalon Bay Communities Incorporated, One Campus Drive, Block two oh two, Lot three point seven, Three Campus Drive, Block two oh two, Lot three point one-two. Pardon me. And Seven Campus Drive, Block two oh two, Lot three point eight. Amended preliminary and final major site plan to relocate unit types, utility room, light poles and plantings, remove screens and gates, and parking.
Assuming all the conditions are the same.
Same conditions, comply with the board engineering reports. The, there was, wasn't the evergreen screening on three campus, but update the architectural plans regarding signage and all of the, and the escrow for sidewalks.
Second. All right, we've got a motion and a second. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Barbario.
Yes.
Deech.
Yes.
De Piero.
Yes.
McGrath.
Yes.
Mealy.
Yes.
Napolitano.
Yes.
Stanziel.
Yes.
Stinsmore.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, board.
Very good. Thank you. Is there anything else that needs to come before this board tonight?
End adjournment.
So I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I got a second and a motion, anybody?
John, congratulations. On your designation, winning the...
Thank you, I appreciate that.